Okay, we'll call it to order this February the 10th, 2016, meeting of the Franklin County Commission.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Waymire?
Here.
Commissioner Renaud. Chair Howard?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
Okay, if you'll join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, if you have any electronic devices, if you put them on silent, and then please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Pastor Aaron Harshaw.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gracious heavenly Father, we want to thank you, Lord, for the day you've created. Thank you, Lord, for the cut of the wind today, and just ask specifically here now for the ladies and gentlemen that are sworn to execute the necessary decisions and leadership for this county, Lord, you give them grace today and wisdom rooted in the fear of you. Lord, we love you, we thank you for these are co-laborers here in Franklin County, and we appreciate the manner in which they selflessly sacrifice and serve for the betterment of our community. Lord, we love you, and again, we thank you for this day, in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you. That takes us to correspondence and organizational.
Just a reminder for the commissioners that there is the management lunch here at noon.
Anyone signed up for public comment? Okay, that'll take us to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are the minutes from the February the 3rd, 2016, commission meeting, and the February the 8th, 2016, study session, and have tax change orders in an amount of a minus $9,363.88. There's no claim vouchers.
Was that from tax appeals? Or were the tax change orders down so much for?
Yes.
Tax appeal, yep. Sorry, just wondering what I was proving.
That's fine. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Submit.
Have a motion, have a second?
Roy did.
Roy's seconded.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, our first item in business will be to consider a motion to approve the solid waste department to accept waste on the dates below from residents for free of charge. John, talk to Spencer.
Morning, commissioners. As you know, annually, the commission has sponsored a spring cleanup or free dump days at the transfer station for the Franklin County residents, allows the residents to haul trash, brush scrap metal, and CND debris into the transfer station free of charge, excluding tires, appliances containing freon, and commercial accounts. Recommended schedule is a lot like we've done in the past, cities west of 59 will dump for free on the CND landfill, the April 7th through the April 9th, and cities east of the 59th Highway will be April 14th through April 16th, and then the free dump at the actual transfer station will be April 22nd, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and Saturday, or through Saturday, and it's Saturday, April 23rd, from 7:30 to 1:30. Coming today to consider a motion to approve the solid waste department to accept waste on those dates from residents of Franklin County for free of charge.
Okay, it's been a pretty, ever since I've been on the mission, we've done that. I know that out of my area, they appreciate it, and definitely fill them up pretty quick, so.
Yes, yes, and we will send publications out to each city notifying them of the dates, as well as we'll run an ADNA in the Ottawa Herald.
Who else exactly is exempt, just the haulers?
No, this is, the residents can come in on the CND landfill on those dates, that I was saying, the 9th, like I said, we'll split it up, just to keep the lines down, get people in and out the quickest, and we will have roll-offs, there will be roll-offs set in each city, and those will dump as well, but then we'll actually open it up for the residents just to haul their own stuff in.
And who's prohibited? Like I said, you said just the haulers can't, can't take advantage of it?
Yeah, yeah, commercial accounts, we don't, we don't open that up for free of charge for commercial accounts, as well as there's certain things that we charge for, like tires.
Tires, sure, yeah.
And appliances containing freon.
I had a guy yesterday, or last year, he's a contractor, so he has a small truck with a dump bed, cleaned out his house and some stuff out of his garage, and took it there, he said, "Well, you can't because you're a contractor." So, I didn't know, I mean, we don't really define it. We don't want people to abuse it, I understand that, you know.
Right, 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 yeah, i- if you happen to be a contractor, yet you're taking advantage of this for your own personal, then we'll, and then that'll be a free of charge deal, yes.
Any more questions for John?
I'd make a motion to approve the free dump day, as outlined in the proposal.
Okay, have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motions.
Thank you, commissioners.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, our second item will be to discuss the year-end health department revenue report and approve the write-offs. Midge?
Good morning. I apologize for not getting a third quarter report, so you've got this all together. This has been a rather challenging six months, switching to our new software system, so pulling the numbers has offered a little bit of a challenge, plus we had to move everybody over from the old system into the new system manually, or most people manually, which enabled us to go through one by one. There's about 7,000 people in that report that we had to go through one by one and make sure our ledgers were clean and move any open balances over, so we did finally get that completed. So, we've had a strong six months with private insurance, and I made note at the bottom of the report, just for interest purposes of all our clients, 71% showed that they had private insurance, so that's pretty high, and then that has, and public being 21%, so 97% of our population that comes in the health department over the last year, basically, has been insured. The uninsured clients that we see primarily are those that are seeking family planning services, there are a few immunizations, particularly among adults, that are uninsured, but I think it speaks to some of the push to get people insured, plus people going back to work. We're seeing considerable difference in the number of people back to work. That's also reflected in our WIC numbers. Back in 2008, '09, '10, we were seeing 700, you know, enrolled and participating individuals or more above 700, and we're now down below 600 enrolled, which is also a reflection of people getting jobs. So, that's a real positive sign, so that's kind of interesting, but the number of insured clients, I think, points to the fact that we really did need the new system, and we appreciate that because it is facilitating the billing processes. We're able now to actually get a claim sent the day that we do the service, and we're getting funds back within seven days on those claims, where it used to take sometimes three or four months, and there were times when Medicare, trying to keep up with Medicare, took us all year, so that Medicare billing is done for last year, which is amazing. So, the system has worked, but there are still, as with any new system, some challenges and some reporting challenges, so we've struggled a little bit making sure our numbers are clean, but as you can see, we did have extra grants this year, funding the CDRR grant, and we did exceed a little bit on our private pay and insurance payments that helped our bottom line for year-end revenue at over a million, 1.152. Then, the write-offs, as I said, we, this looks a little high, but this is actually six months, and includes those account cleanups that we did out of our old system, some of those were old debt, insurance payments that refused to pay, things like that, so I'd be glad to answer any questions about any of that that you may have, but the write-offs we're requesting are $64,891.71, as split out under those different subgroups, so.
How does that compare to previous years, previous quarters?
Previous quarters, and of course, like I said, this is six, so it's, it's a little higher, it's probably, I think, our write-offs quarterly have been up in the around 20,000, 22,000, but as I said, we went back and really took a manual look at every QuickBooks account we had, and we did write some of those off. Some of them, you know, when CanCare came in, a couple of the companies, we had some real issues with payments reversals, payments reversals, and we're, I finally gave up on some of them, because we're talking $2 amounts, $5 amounts, you know, it's just not worth pursuing, so there actually were quite, quite a bit of that kind of thing that just needed to be written off the books, those little dabs, so there's, there's a lot of that. There's also some people that we've lost track of, that we had billed that didn't pay, and we've just lost track, we can't pursue that any further, so there, it's a higher number because of that cleanup.
So, though, and the reason I was asking, you're saying it's higher, is that you, I mean, common sense, you would think that with the higher increase of the number of people covered under insurance from previously, that there would be potentially less write-offs because you have more people, more people covered, so really, what you're telling me, you're telling us, is that the spike in this being higher is because of going back and doing some cleanup, so as we go forward, not to hold you to anything, but we could assume with the increase in percentage of covered folks, that then the, the amount that we'd have to write off should, should also, should decrease as the number of people insured increases?
That would be my assumption, the, the one difference would be on the insurance write-offs, and I was, it's something to consider whether, because that's an adjustment under contractual obligation.
Right.
Whether that should even be considered in the write-offs, because that's, contractually, we're obligated to accept X number of dollars, but we bill a little above that, so whether that should even be.
And that's a very good question, and, you know, that's something that I don't have the answer to, and you don't either right now, I think that in making that determination, maybe look at what other, I mean, how, how does Ottawa Family Physicians or any other medical provider account for that? They probably want to keep a stat on it, but is it really a write-off, because then again, it's a contractual agreement.
Right.
For the services provided for specific, you know, items.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they do consider it a write-off, you do write off that amount?
Actually, and that's actually what, I think it says something like that right on your EO, the EOBs I get.
EOBs tell you that.
The agreed amount and the.
Right.
The provider write-off, so I don't know.
Yeah, it's just whether you want to see that number, but that number, as we get more insurance, you know, and, and sequestration with the federal government also impacted some of our reimbursement through Medicare and Medicaid, so those are all in that insurance number.
Well, there's a possibility with Medicare and Medicaid, though, that the write-off amounts may increase there, you never can.
Yeah, they might, so, yeah.
Yeah, I got you.
It's hard to know.
Okay, Midge, Midge, do you direct people that don't have insurance, that are supposedly supposed to have insurance now, do you direct them to somewhere where they can get signed up for insurance?
Get signed up for insurance, if they don't have insurance, we, yes, encourage them to, as far, as far as kids particularly, we don't see a whole lot of adults, but the adults that are uninsured, we're directing to the Health Partnership Clinic, they have somebody on staff who can sit there and help them fill out an application if necessary, whereas we haven't really had enough time to do that very often. I mean, we do help people with Medicaid applications or insurance applications, but Health Partnership has kind of taken that over, and being right there in our office, then that really facilitates those uninsured individuals.
How's that working, by the way, with the Health Partnership? I mean, are they, are they having a lot of traffic, and then also how, a two-part question, how's it working out with them being co-located with us temporarily?
It's, it's actually working out a little better than I had anticipated, now that we're kind of in the groove, it's working out pretty well, it really is convenient right now for the people who need their services. Their traffic is increasing significantly, we have, the one thing I, that has happened as they're building Franklin County and surrounding area, you know, local individual clients, they're filling their schedule with people that are overflow from Miami and Johnson County, but that helps them pay their bills, so.
Sure.
We're seeing some traffic from those areas.
And they're still actively looking for a location of themselves, what, what was the square footage size that they were needing?
Initially, 5,000 square feet is what they said. Now, they, actually, they had a significant turnover in their leadership, and so Frank Ellis, who initiated the Swope Park system up in Kansas City, is now their interim administrator, he has some big ideas, big plans, and is, so they're looking again at what might be available. John, we contacted John at the Chamber, and he has provided some additional ideas for pursuing space, but it's working out pretty well.
Very good. So, your revenues were higher than budgeted, what about your expenses? I know some years vaccines can go.
Huh, that was, I was scared, I was scared because we had quite a push for Prevnar among individuals over 65, and that's an expensive vaccine. We, we were under budget, we stayed under our budget, but it's something I may have to come back and talk to you about for this budget year, because the docs are sending all their older patients over to us, plus there's a new vaccine for meningitis out called Trumembas, which is going to be over $100 a dose, but it's going to be highly recommended. It, it covers, it has been available in Europe, and I don't know if you recall, there was an outbreak of meningitis back east on a college campus, that's the strain that this helps protect against. That's going to be an expensive vaccine, we're going to start offering it, just to see what kind of response we get, and then, but that'll bust our budget if we don't look at that closely, so, yeah.
So, do you have a, you don't have an equipment fund or anything like that for the health department, do we?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Or will we be transferring to, are there capital needs coming up for that? Or will it go to General, or?
Not that we've looked at so far, not anything on the list so far.
The one good, the one thing about that is, the vast majority, probably 99.8% of those vaccines are reimbursable through the insurance based on these insurance numbers, we wouldn't give very much of that away, and even for, and it wouldn't affect adult, it might affect a few individuals who are 19 or 20, that are caught, if they're caught without insurance, but they're, the, the vaccine companies do have a program for underinsured, uninsured adults, that we can sometimes get, we don't trade money, we just get a vaccine replacement through that program, so there's ways to work with that, but that's really, you know, just money that we're going to bill back out and get back into our budget, so I, I will be watching that pretty close this year.
Sure.
Has your flu numbers been down with this mild winter?
This mild, we're just across the state starting to see flu. The first case that was confirmed just came out this last week. Now, that doesn't mean there hasn't been some flu, there has been, but it was the first Kansas confirmed case, and so we, we have, I have since then seen a few more cases, but yeah, it's been mild, we had really great numbers for getting flu vaccine this year, which helps, so we'll see, the year's not over, no.
And when, when one thing goes away, another, another thing?
Something else pops up.
Like right now, and of course, on the map this morning on the National News, we were one of the several states that didn't have red for the Zika, but I'm just wondering what, what kind of notices and things like that you're getting from CDC regarding that, because.
Right.
We're just in, we're actually just in the beginnings of this, according to my daughter who works at the CDC.
Right, right, she'd be on top of it, I know. The, the, kind of, what we're looking at is that, certainly right now, it's travelers that are, are going to be infected, that have been to areas where the mosquitoes are and the Zika virus is, it's a concern. Certainly, if there's pregnant women who are, or want to be pregnant, we don't want them to travel to those areas, that is a huge concern. The recent report that it was transmitted other than by mosquitoes.
Mm-hmm.
Is also a concern, but, but for our area, one of the things they think, and of course, nobody knows for sure, but since Chickamaunga and Dengue didn't come north like they thought it might, because we don't have the same mosquito population, that we probably won't see Zika at the same rates either. It's anybody's guess, I mean, this, I was listening to a report this morning, in fact, about, you know, they've known that Zika's existed for 60 years, but they did not until recently recognize the side of the effects, and it didn't break out like it, it has in Brazil until just recently, so, you know, it's an emerging infectious disease, we're just going to have to watch it very closely.
Okay, anyone, any more questions for Midge? If not, look for a motion to approve the third and fourth quarter write-offs for the health department. Feel moved.
Second.
Motion and a second?
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Midge. Midge? Nick, you're up next, our next item is to discuss the December 15th, 2015 EMS.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
We went into a pretty good detail on the report on Monday, so I'll just highlight a few things. December, we ended up the year with 3,205 calls, we did have deposits of 83,436.04, total deposits of 945,374.9, we have adjustments of 44,418.30, we are sending $16,769.42 to the set-off, and $12,585.19 to Midwest Collections. Are there any questions you guys had on that report that you thought of over the last couple of days?
Not with me, like you said, we covered it pretty well Monday.
Very, in detail.
Is there any one, any more questions?
Like, like you said, we covered it in very, a lot of detail on Monday, I don't have any other questions, unless any of my fellow commissioners have statements or comments or questions about it, I'd make a motion that we approve the December 2015 EMS report from Mr. Robbins.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, Nick's going to stay with us for the fourth item, which will be to discuss and approve the bids for the Sprinter style ambulance.
Again, we talked about this quite a bit on Monday, I was asked to add reflective graphics, which I appreciate the, the ability to do that, which brings us going with a bid of professional ambulance for $99,519 for a Sprinter ambulance for the graphics on the truck, it'll be 5,000. The Striker cot, which is $14,995, which, when we get close to that truck, we'll be looking, working with John to see if we can get something a little cheaper than a already demo cot, but that's what the bid is for a new one, which would be a total of $100,019, or 1,000, 100,000, $119,514 for the total bid for the truck, for the Sprinter ambulance.
Yeah, I'd get choked up too if I was asking for that much money. No, I'm just kidding. You know, then, again, we hashed this out quite a lot on Monday as well, I feel like that Nick and the administrator have done their due diligence, I certainly believe that there's no question that we should go down this road, it's going to save us some money in using for transportation, and then have that ambulance in place for when we do have to remount other, other ones, which is all ground that we've covered before.
I agree, like I said, we've talked about it a lot, this wasn't the lowest bid, but whenever we looked into it, it was obviously the, getting the most for the money, so sometimes the lowest bid isn't the best deal for us, and in this case, it doesn't appear that it will, but the lowest bid was the best deal by any means, so.
Well, but, and then there's this thing that, and people always wonder about, but it's, I think it's the lowest responsible bid, we, we want to be responsible in it, and I think it's responsible in, in selecting this one.
And this was one that did give us everything we asked for in the bid, the other specs that we got didn't have the forward-facing seats, didn't have the, the attendant safety stuff in the back that we were looking for, and it also has the heavier-duty cabinets versus just fiberglass molded cabinets, so it's quite a bit better truck.
As a former EMS guy, you have anything that insights for us there, Commissioner Dunn?
Yeah, all the stuff is 100% better than when I was on the service.
Back in 19 watt?
Mid-century.
Roy said one time, when I was doing it, we threw him in the back of a station wagon.
That's what he told me, yeah, the other day, yeah, yeah, headquartered out of the basement of the, the courts building.
In preparation for the 40th, so I was going through the 1976, which was our first year books, we were billing out $2,000 and collecting $1,800 back then, a month, and running about 30 to 40 calls a day, a month, so it was kind of fun to go back and look at all the different numbers from back then.
Evolution, but, the evolution, but the level of service that we provide, I mean, it was a service when Roy was doing it, but the, how we've evolved, and I feel, I mean, I personally feel the level of service we provide and the potentiality for saving lives with the training and the availability of, of you guys, I mean, I just think it's awesome.
Thank you.
I guess be a good addition to the ambulance department, so I'll make a motion to approve the ambulance and the cot and the graphics for 109, 109,000.
119,514.
I'd figure.
Yep, and I, I would concur, I'll, I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thanks for the job you do, Nick.
Okay, the next item will be to approve solicitation of bids for the 2016 Chip and Seal Project.
I don't know about you guys, but I almost feel like doing the wave because we're doing this so early, yay!
Maintenance activities on the paved roads requires chip seal, the purchasing policy requires bidding the chip seal, solicitation of bids will be published on Saturday, February 13th, and again on the 20th, bid opening will take place on February 25th in the council chamber, in the commission chambers. The request is a motion approving solicitation of bids for the 2016 Chip Seal Program.
I do have one, this question, is there any way into these bids, we can state some times we'd like to have it done by? I mean, it does, help us to, what, when we put the bids out, if they're going to put us off till the end of the year, whoever chooses, or the end of the summer, whoever chooses to do it?
There is an ending date contained in the Kansas Department of Transportation specifications.
So, possibly having that in there, where we can get it earlier than we have in the past?
Possibly.
Yeah, and I think though, too, just getting in line earlier helps us out.
The fact that we have nine miles left over from last year, when they ran out of cover material, I'm certainly going to encourage. I'm certainly going to encourage.